I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Thursday evening, March 4th, 2021. Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. If anyone is recording this meeting or intends to record or take photographs during the meeting, could you please raise your hand and identify yourself? Okay, seeing none, I would just announce that for the purposes of this evening, members of the Board of Selectmen who will be participating remotely, which is all of us, myself, Mary Power, the Chair, Joseph Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. Our first order of business on the agenda, we have two sets of minutes, February 9th and February 11th. If my colleagues are ready, I'd accept a motion for both of those sets of minutes.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes dated February 9th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye. And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated February 11th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Thank you. The next item of business on our agenda is the approval of an agreement with Clifton Larson Allen LLP for audit services for the fiscal years ending June 30th, 2021, 2022, and 2023. We're joined by Town Accountant Sue Nickerson. Sue, are you going to walk us through this, or will someone else be?
I was just asked to come just in case anyone had any questions.
Okay. Tom or Michelle, it's been thrown over to you.
Sure. So this is the second three-year contract with CLA. They joined us three years ago after a long stint by another firm. As you remember, during that period, Mary, you were on the board. I think that, you know, the town likes to mix these things up a little bit every several so long. It's generally nine years, so three three-year contracts. This is the second of those three three-year contracts. So these are, it's all within budget, and the contract is of our normal form for contracts. And John has reviewed everything.
And Tom, Sue, and Michelle, I'm assuming since this is before us this evening, that we are satisfied with Clifton Larson Allen?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Joe, any questions on this contract?
Yeah, I just want to confirm that the payment amount in the contract is consistent with the payment terms of prior contracts?
Yes, they are. The additionals are for any additional gas fees and/or the water company.
And this refers to fiscal years ending June 30th, 2021, 2022, and 2023, at least that's what's in our notice.
Yep, that is correct.
The document seems to refer to a period ending in 2022. So I'm looking, for example, at the second paragraph, audit of Lincoln Apartments for the years ending December 31st, 2020, '21, and 2022.
Yes, Lincoln School Apartments and the retirement system are calendar years.
Okay.
So they're done end of December's, and the town is fiscal year ending June 30th.
So this would be ending June 30th of what year?
This is for June 30th, '21, '22, and '23.
Okay. So the agreement contemplates that the work will be completed no later than December 31 of 2023. So that's consistent with our fiscal year.
Yes.
Then I got no other questions. This looks good. Thank you.
Bill, any questions?
No questions. I've reviewed the document. Looks good to me. Better take action when you want a motion.
Okay. Anyone in the public have a question or wish to make a comment with respect to this agenda item? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion.
Sure. I'll make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Clifton Larson Allen LLP for audit services for the fiscal years ending June 30th, 2021, 2022, and 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Have a good night. I know you're headed over to AdCom, so you've got a ways to go tonight. Next item of business on the agenda is a transfer station revenue analysis and proposed fees. We're joined this evening by Superintendent Randy Sylvester, who actually provided the Board with the packet of information that'll be the basis for tonight's discussion. Randy, welcome. Could you, you know, could you please walk the Board and the public through the information and the proposal that you're making?
Sure. So I made a proposal due to the fact that the last few years, I've noticed, well, the last five, six years, I've noticed that the recycling rate has been going up in the town, and I've had to increase the budget every year in order to cover those costs. So what we did was, we went to the social recycling cooperative towns, which we remember, and we went out to the drop-off towns and did some research. My staff went out and they researched all their costs and any revenues that they took in, and we created this chart, VR review, and what we found was, is Hingham is well below in the charges and not charging basically for everything. And-
Excuse me, one second. Can we get that chart thrown up on the screen so that everyone can look at it?
Sure, I can pull it up.
Thank you.
So basically, if you look at the chart, we went through all their costs, sticker costs, commercial sticker costs that they had, bulky waste, scale fees, appliance, electronics, anything that they charged for. What we noticed is that Hingham was well below and not charging for some of the recycling costs that have come about in the last couple of years. So I found it prudent to talk to Tom and Michelle, and I wrote the memo, we did the chart, and I wanted to present it to you so you have an idea of where we stand compared to the other towns. When I started in 2005, our recycling costs were $25,000. Today, they're hovering around $130,000, and our budget right now, and I've upped it, is only $100,000. So I don't see anything changing, and it's every time, every year, the costs are going up incrementally. So I figured that it may be time to go and, instead of raising taxes, to put forth some fees that every other town in the social recycling cooperative is actually charging. And basically, that's why I put it forth. So actually, what I did is, I did the mean, and I have some proposed, I have some recommended fees for VR review, and that's about it. Now, make any questions?
Sure. Michelle, maybe you could put up the slide that shows the recommended fees. I think that might be the next page in the document. There we go. Thank you. Randy, just a couple of questions, and then I'll open it up for my colleagues. For some of these fees, like for example, for electronics or for furniture, how will a resident pay that fee?
So we're set up to take credit cards and payments going over the scale. So the thought right now is that anyone with these items would end up going over the scale, and we would pay there, and then they would go from that point out to the transfer station and deposit it in the correct spot.
Yep. I like that concept because I know for some people, the process of getting a bulky waste permit over at the DPW office, especially for people who work during the day out of Hingham, logistically, it's just a couple extra steps. So it looks like with these fees, you can actually pay on-site when you're transporting your materials to the transfer station.
Absolutely. And since we've been doing this, the only thing we've gotten is positive comments, is that the public seems to like being able to just take their materials, go over the scale, pay the fee, and be done with it, not having to come to the DPW to get inspections. We do all the inspections there when it's done.
Yep. Thank you. Bill, maybe I'll start with you, since you're the Public Works Liaison to the Board. Do you have any questions or comments for Randy?
So my first comment is, Mary, I agree with you. It's difficult at times for people who are working to get over to the building to get a bulk waste permit. So the fact you can do it there on-site is helpful. I think that's a good, and we're doing that now, actually, Randy, right? So I think that's a good change. How would you define appliances, electronics? I'm kind of wondering what that covers. Are you still working that out?
So the appliances are more like white goods. That would be your large appliances, such as refrigerators, stoves, air conditioners, anything basically with freon, because we have to pay to get rid of that freon, or have them take it out and recycle it. Any large items like that, washing machines, dryers, those would have a fee incorporated into that. Small appliances, such as blenders and whatnot, there would not be a fee for that, just only the large items.
Okay. I know a lot of folks drop the large items, appliance-type items on the right, you know, beyond the book, beyond the waste station and the books. So my other question to you, Randy, is this. Let's say I was going to get rid of a couch, right? What I do now, in fact, I did this over the Christmas break, you know, I come in, my vehicle was weighed with the couch in the back, went over, dropped it off, come back around, and it's weighed again. Would the cost of doing something like that increase for a resident, and by how much?
So what I'm proposing is no change to the resident on what they pay for any of these items going over the scale. It'll be $120 a ton, or $15 minimum, and that's up to 250 pounds. The only change is for commercial entities, I did the mean, I compared all the towns, and we are way undercharging. So I am recommending it to go up three times to $320 for commercial entities only, a ton, or $45 minimum for 250 pounds. But regular residents, nothing would change.
And you said the costs associated with recycling, plastic, decans, paper, everything, comes out of your budget $130,000?
Yes.
That's really gone up. That's really gone up, yeah.
Yes. Years ago, we used to get paid for this, or we used to get rid of it for free.
Right.
But that's not the case anymore. Ever since the national sword policy came from China, the industry has changed totally, and now it's a cost. It doesn't cost as much as trash, but there is a cost for it.
Yeah, a couple of months ago, I had a conversation with Steve Messinger, and he told me that. He said that the cost of recycling now is just through the roof. We lose a lot of money on our recycling costs. So I think this is a good change. Randy, I appreciate you doing this work, and, you know, it looks good on my end. That's all I have, Mary. Thank you.
Joe, questions, comments for Randy?
Well, first was for Bill. Bill, you got rid of a couch? You should have let me know. I may have been interested in that. But no, I mean, I've reviewed this. I think this is, it's important for us to be looking at. One of the, one thing that really jumped out to me is that the sticker cost for the first household member in Hingham is zero cost, and virtually every other town has a cost for the sticker for a resident. And Randy, why is it that the town does not charge anything for a residential sticker?
Well, apparently, there's a bylaw that says we can't charge for residents to get rid of trash. So there is a cost associated with a second sticker, but not with a first sticker per household.
Okay.
And that's the reason why.
And when would you expect to implement these changes?
Well, I think we can, I'm looking at about May 1st. That would be up to the Board, of course. We would have to make sure things are signed properly up at the transfer station, and we would publicize it so everyone would know well in advance before we made the change. And I think if you guys voted, we could get all that done, and we could be ready for May 1st.
I think socializing this, making sure that people understand what's coming, and so they don't show up and then they're frustrated, is important. Sounds like you're looking at that.
Absolutely.
One final concern I have, and I'm not sure if I would use the word, if I should use the word concern, but I just want to make sure that we've looked at it, which is, during these COVID times, we need to make sure that we're not increasing interactions where people are trying to keep a social distance. And do you see implementation of these fees and this arrangement as increasing interactions? And if so, what can we do to make sure that everyone's protected?
Actually, we're trying to keep our distance even when there's a scale transaction taking place. We do have a credit card machine. We prefer credit cards. It's easier all the way around. So there is no real personal contact, other than taking the machine and going back and forth. Other than that, our employees are back. They always have masks on when they're dealing with anything outside, so I don't think there would be an issue there.
Great. I mean, we're concerned for the residents and the staff there, so it sounds like you've looked at it. I really appreciate your putting this forward. We are, as you know, as a town, looking at revenue sources, and this is one source that we absolutely need to consider. So thank you, and I really appreciate your efforts and the efforts of your team. That's wonderful.
Yeah, Randy, I appreciate what you've put together. I think you're thinking through how to implement. I like the idea of potentially implementing this in May because that sort of gives a little bit of time before the next fiscal year begins. As much as I would love to tell the public that a potential increase in transfer station fees of $150,000 is going to solve our budget deficit, unfortunately, we do have a ways to go, but every bit helps. I think more importantly, just even this year, when you reviewed your budget, the cost of trash removal from last year to this year is going up by $90,000. And if you look at it over the last few years, as you said, it's gone up. So this is really, this is a case where the cost to the town of providing the service is escalating, and this is an effort to try to sort of keep up with some of that. I would suggest, Bill and Joe, that, I think it's been the Board's practice in the past, that before adopting a rate structure on something, that we hold a hearing on it, as we're doing tonight, we might send out a news alert and post it on the website, and then the Board would, and it sounds like this timing will work for Randy, take it back up in two weeks, giving members of the public and people who might be affected the opportunity to reach out and contact the Board, so that we have input prior to making a decision. So Randy, does that timing work for you?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
We'll continue to work on this. We'll be prepared.
Yep, okay. Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment about these proposed Okay, seeing none. As I said, we're not going to take a vote tonight, Randy, but I think maybe we'll put this on our agenda for, maybe we could put it on for March 16th, which is in 12 days. And I think at that point, we'd be looking to adopt it, and certainly, to the extent that our office receives any feedback from citizens, we'll make sure that you're seeing it, and it informs your final recommendations to the Board as well. Great. Hey, Randy, thank you so much. I appreciate you taking the initiative on this.
Yep, thank you.
The next item of business on our agenda this evening, the Board is going to be considering three Warren articles. One Warren article we will be hearing this evening that we have not heard yet, and two other Warren articles where those hearings were continued. The first article that we're going to be considering this evening is Article BB. Article BB is a citizen's petition to amend the general bylaws, Articles 2 and 3. This evening, we're joined by Mr. Tom Patch, who is the lead proponent for this article. Tom, I'm going to turn it over to you for a review to the Board and the public of what you're seeking in this Warren article. Thank you for being here this evening.
You're welcome, and thank you for the opportunity to answer your questions. So this is a real basic, I would consider relatively innocuous thing that I'm trying to accomplish here, and it's taking a nice tradition and trying to improve on it. And so trying to make it more inclusive. Essentially, what's happening right now is, at town meeting, there's essentially a tradition where the Chair would announce the passing of employees since a previous town meeting.
Excuse me, Tom. I'm getting some noise, as if someone else has a crowd in the background?
Yeah, in the background. I apologize for that.
Oh, is that coming from you, Tom?
Yeah, that's coming from me.
Is there anything you can do to address that?
I'm sorry. This is where I'm at as far as being able to livestream, you know?
Okay.
Is it really, again, I apologize, is it really preventing you from hearing this? Or, I mean-
I think we'll do our best. I think we're okay.
Okay. I apologize.
Tom, I'm sorry, while we've interrupted, I neglected to ask if you could please give your address for the record.
Oh, Shep Street in Hingham.
Okay. I'm sorry, so you were saying an improvement and more inclusive?
Yeah. And so basically, what it is, is that right now, the town meeting, it's announcing the passing of employees, and for some reason, I've spoken with the town clerk about this, for some reason, the school department employees aren't included. And I don't know if that's just more of a paperwork thing where, you know, the information is passed over so that they could be announced. But not only that, you don't have any other members of the part of town government that implements essentially what the meeting is asking of, you know, to be done to operate the town. So this is intended to address those people that aren't right now included, which would be elected officials, which would be appointed volunteers, you know, people to committees, and hopefully, you know, somehow it can be worked out with the school department people. And basically, first, to give it, enshrining it in town meetings so it has a level of permanency, because right now, it's a discretion, everything. And trying to set down essentially what the expression of gratitude would be from the legislative branch to these people who work within the executive branch of town government, effectively the executive branch. So it's, you know, as they always say, wakes aren't for the living, I'm wrong, wakes aren't for the living, not for the deceased person. And so basically, it's a sign of respect for families, loved ones, and friends who the contribution that a person, their father, their aunt, brother, sister, whatever, may have contributed to the town. And I'm looking at it as other objectives here, is demonstrating good citizenship, encouraging civic engagement and responsibility through participation in town government. It's a reminder to people who live in this town that the town that everybody wants to come and move to and live and potentially raise their families was forged by essentially these people who came before them. And sort of the idea, it's akin to, within town government, it takes a village. And it's not singling out any one particular person as in saying that their contribution is more significant than others. It's the idea that it's an expression of gratitude as to everybody's contribution is appreciated, regardless of the length of term or size of impact. And I've spoken to the town clerk in terms of the burden that would be put on the town clerk, and my impression is that she believes it would essentially be negligible, once it's up and running, so to speak, after the first year, where you would have to develop a little bit of a database, potentially, that it's essentially cruise control from that point forward. The town clerk does have a similar role in the Memorial Day ceremony with respect to deceased veterans. She gets up and announces a roll call of deceased veterans. I think the important thing here is, I'm not putting any affirmative burden on the town clerk, or even the town, to seek out those names and the positions. It's, and I had a conversation with Mr. Mayo about this, and I think he seemed to catch it when he, correct me, Tom, if I'm wrong, but basically, you had said, you know, my language known, or made known, essentially to the town clerk. And so the town clerk would know things as a result of death certificates, obviously. And in the case of someone who once had worked, or once had been an appointed volunteer, or an elected official, and they say they moved to Arizona, and they happened to pass away, well, there's no affirmative obligation on the town to, you know, follow that person in permanency. So I'll give you an example. So in the past year, Lou Ernst passed away, and he was the superintendent of schools when I was going through the Hingham schools. And he ended up moving from Hingham and living in his last years down with his daughter, Alicia, who I was a classmate of mine. So again, you know, here's a person who moved out of state, but it apparently came to the attention of the town clerk through, you know, through the retirement system, as well as, the obituary was posted, I think, in the Hingham Journal and this type of thing. So there's no affirmative obligation here. It's sort of a, what you know, or someone's made it known to you. I think there were some concerns about, you know, deadlines, and how do you, you know, what if somebody comes in at the last minute and so forth? And again, there's no real consequence here. There's no penalty. It's not a crime if we don't do this. I mean, it's just trying to do something nice. It's designed to, basically, you know, if we can set aside 10 minutes at town meeting, which is negligible in terms of the overall town meeting, and, you know, if you're doing a roll call, essentially, five seconds per person, roughly, you know, that's 20 persons, or, you know, 12 persons per minute, and, you know, 10 minutes, 120 people. Hopefully, we don't have 120 people who are former town employees or whatever, town-appointed volunteers. volunteers, elected officials die in any one year. But again, we're not talking a heck of a lot of time, given the fact that people such as yourself, you know, you put the time in. And I think it's the least we can do as town meeting to basically say, hey, you know, we appreciate that. And I think it's a nice gesture, and it shows the town has a real positive attitude towards those people who are willing to work for the town, those people are willing to be elected officials in the town, and those people are willing to be appointed volunteers for the town. And that's basically where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Just a question, Tom, looking through your petition, I don't see any references to the school department. Is there anything in here about the school department, or is that something that you're looking for at the future? I just want to clarify what the scope of this is.
Okay, so my understanding is that currently, that information, the reason why the school department employees aren't included is apparently that information is not being passed from the school department to the powers that be.
Okay.
And so, basically, technically, the employees of the school department are employees of the town. And so, basically, again, for whatever reason, they're not included. And, you know, I really, you know, in all candor, you know, I've, at certain times, you hear kind of grumblings from people, and, you know, those people don't want to come forward, you know? And what I'm trying to do is, I'm just trying to make everybody feel like their contribution was appreciated.
Absolutely.
And again, I'm not, there's no agenda here, you know, it's like, it's the basic idea that, hey, you know, somebody may have done 30 years on a position, somebody may have done a year, somebody who did it in a year, maybe their contribution was outsized relative to their particular term, you know, they did something tremendous. Somebody, you know, served 30 years, could have just, you know, done a good job, but nothing that, you know, nothing that's going to, you know, make the Guinness Book of World Records. But it's the basic idea that everybody's contribution is appreciated. And I think that we as a town, you know, it sends a good message to people, you know? We want you to, you know, we want you to participate, you know, we appreciate it, and I'm the child of a former municipal employee in the town, and I know the hours that my father put in. And again, it's like, it's like the hours that you people are putting in. It's an expression of appreciation. I just think it's the least we can do. It's a day minimus burden here, and I think it speaks well of the town and how they view the people that fill these roles.
Yeah, thank you. So, I think what you're saying, so it sounds like we have the opportunity as a town to recognize deceased employees in the school department. We don't need a change in the bylaw, that's just, you know, Tom.
Maybe I can give you some color on that. So, we would, so right now, we do all employees. You would think the school department would be in there. The problem with that is that they're in a different retirement system, and their retirement system doesn't report out to us. We can't access those records. That's the only reason that they're not read right now, otherwise they would be.
Okay. Let me open this up to questions from my colleagues. Joe, why don't we start with you, questions on Article BB?
Sure. And I think it is important that we appreciate all the volunteers in town. Tom, do you know if other towns have any similar requirements in their bylaws requiring town meeting to read the names of people who are deceased?
I've done some research on that, and I can't really find anything about that. For example, Brookline has in their bylaw, they have some language in there about these types of recognitions, essentially, and how...
So, Tom, I'm just, I'm trying to keep focused. Is there any other town that has such a provision in their bylaw?
To answer the question...
That you know?
Right, that I know of, no. This is, right.
Okay. And you have a count of how many people that we, the universe that we be looking at in terms of volunteers, you know, both volunteers at the school as well as for the town? Do you have, you know, an estimate of the number of people?
Well, you know, Mr. Mayo told me, and it's sort of common knowledge, we're looking at it, any given year, I believe we're looking around 400 appointed employees, appointed volunteers, I think is, was the number that was thrown at me. And we already, you know, we already have an idea of what the town employees are. Elected officials, you know, we have less than probably 30 elected officials in, you know, in any, during any particular year. And, but again, the school, number of school department employees, I would say, again, my understanding is that's probably somewhere in, probably approaching, you know, a little under 1,000, I would imagine, something like that. I mean, there's quite a few school department employees. So, that's your universe, so to speak, as to the groups that you're talking about.
So, the first group, which is just basically town volunteers, an estimate of about 400? Is that what you were saying, just for that whole group?
Yeah, well, that's what I, my conversation with Mr. Mayo the other day, that's, I think that was the number he threw out. And what I'm talking about, Joe, just so we understand, I'm talking about appointed people, you know, people appointed to committees. You people go through your appointments every year, and you appoint people. Those are the people that I'm talking, I have a very, you know, narrow scope of group here.
Tom, do you have a...
That's the number for appointed and elected officials, that's roughly the number, yeah.
So, if we look, if we took the 400 and we went back over 30 years, that would be 12,000 people. That, in just that one category.
Joe, people would serve, I'm sorry, I don't mean to jump in, but keep in mind that people serve, you know, the average volunteer will serve, you know, even if you said three or four years. And we know we're a town that's fortunate to have some people, some on this call, who have served, you know, many, many years.
Yeah, right. So, you know, if we're talking about, let's say, 8,000 people, so the thought would be that when someone, in the event someone passes, that name would go to the town clerk, and they would check the list of 8,000 people to see if they're on the list? Is that how you'd see this going?
Well, yeah, I mean, basically, I would, I'm not telling, I'm not setting down a procedure of how this is accomplished. And so, it's sort of left to the discretion, you know, left to the wisdom of the, you know, executive branch, how they want to get this done. But in the age of, excuse me, spreadsheet software with search capabilities, and that's why in speaking to the town clerk about this, I had asked her, said, you know, what kind of administrative burden do you kind of receive? And she says, well, there's going to be sort of an initial one where we try to put this together. But, you know, all the departments basically have, should have a database of essentially information that this can be checked against.
Sure.
And it's just, once it comes to the attention, you put the person's name in. And again, I'm not saying, when I'm talking about the position of the person, I'm not talking, you have to get into the nitty gritty that they were, you know, a teacher's aide or something, this type of thing. You can, it's as simple as, you know, a school department employee, you know, you know, member of the DPW, you know, employee of DPW, that type of thing.
And I know that other committees, including committees that I've been on, that when someone passes, the committee itself recognizes the contribution that the person made, you know, in prior years. Do you think that it's, am I hearing that you don't think that's enough? You also think we need something in addition to what the committees are doing, something at town meeting?
Right, because, again, it's a different, it's a different group that you're, that's giving this recognition. Essentially, it's the legislative branch of the town that's giving this recognition. And it's, you know, putting it in the record of the town report. It doesn't have, the underlying objections is that I'm talking of good citizenship, encouraging participation in town government, this type of thing. You don't necessarily get that if you're just going to say, you know, during an announcement, for example, you know, the Board of Selectmen, you announced that there was a passing of a former selectman or something like that. So, there's, you know, additional underlying objections that I think would be, you know, warranted to doing it this way.
And in your view, if it was printed, let's say, in the book that accompanies, that people get at town meeting, you think that's sufficient, or you actually want each name read as well?
Well, again, I, you know, I would think you could read, you could have each name read. Again, I'm thinking about this, and, you know, I know, Joe, that we're sort of in the baby boom era, where, you know, our population is greater and so forth. The reality of this is there's going to be some level of fall off, you know, people who move away that for whatever reason, don't get, you know, made known or known or made known to the town clerk. So, I think the amount of time that we're looking at here is, I'm basically thinking about probably about 10 minutes or something, you know, along those lines, because I said, you know, you know, if you're doing five, if you're doing five, five seconds per name, basically what you end up doing is, you know, that's 12 a minute, and, you know, 10 minutes is 120 names. You know, I can't imagine that you're going to have more than that in any year. I mean, I would hope not, you know?
Yeah, so would you be amenable that, you know, if it exceeded 10 minutes, that the reading could be waived?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, and that's, you know, again, that's, you know, that's a...
I mean, up to the discretion of the moderator is what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I just would hate to, you know, leave it, I mean, because then you kind of say to yourself, at what point do you predetermine that there's so many names that, you know, it has to be waived, you know, that type of thing. I just, you know, I mean, basically, any person at town meeting can get up and speak to a Warren article for a certain amount of time, and then potentially with the discretion of the moderator, get back up there and, you know, speak to, you know, to some more about this. And I'm thinking that the amount of time that we're talking about here is so day minimus compared to what we're talking, you know, the underlying subject matter of this, and then the length of town meeting anyways. I know everybody is trying to get the, you know, town meeting to be one night and done, but, you know, I think 10 or 15 minutes of town meeting to be, generally speaking, and there might be some years when it's five minutes, it might be some years where it's 20 minutes, give or take. I don't think that's asking too much of the time of people at town meeting to allow these, you know, these, this recognition. I think it's very day minimus in terms of a time commitment. And I would just hate this situation where, you know, you kind of have, you end up having a waiver situation, particularly if you don't really have some kind of, I know you said if it goes beyond 10 minutes, but who's going to really determine that? You know, I mean, somebody could come back and say, well, it's one minute per name. So, if it's more than 10 names, then we're going to waive it. You know, I just would hate to, we have a situation where, you know, this would result in effectively, it doesn't get done, doesn't get announced.
Thanks, I got nothing else.
Okay.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, so a couple of quick comments. You know, I think the sentiment here, Tom, is very nice. It's a very nice gesture, and I agree with you about the one of the volunteers we have. So, I like the intent of what you're trying to do here. I, obviously, Eileen is able to verify the names of employees who pass away through our retirement system, and Keith probably has a system too. I don't know how Keith does it, he might do it through the DA, or he might have a system to track in the deaths that die, but you're right, that happens on Memorial Day. My only concern would be missing people. And I can tell you, a lot of times, when we, this board does things that are, the intention is pure and very nice, when we don't cover everybody, people get very upset, families get very upset, and sometimes they get angry. So, I'd like to just get maybe some more information from Eileen and Keith about the verification. I agree what you said about, yeah, going forward now, we can have a database. I would be worried about, you know, the volunteer who served on, you know, the Bearcove Park Committee for a couple of months, not mentioned, and then their families in the audience, and they're upset because their grandfather wasn't mentioned, or something like that. So, that's really my concern. But then, I think your intention is a good one here, though, and like to get more information, though, on it. Thanks.
Okay, so if I may respond to that, so again, so basically what I put is, is the standard, more or less, was known or made known to the town clerk. So, yeah, I guess it's the idea, Bill, that you're never going to please everybody, okay? You know, right, somebody gets missed, but the general idea is, you know, it's better to try to, you're never going to bat 1,000, so it's better to try to do the best job you can. And as I think I said to Mr. Mayo, you know, this doesn't stop some discretion, for example, if the moderator wanted to, you know, mention, if it came to the moderator's attention, and the moderator could simply say, you know, I just, it's come to my attention that, you know, this and so forth, or that, this type of thing. So, there's still some discretion to address your situation, Bill, that somebody might be omitted, you know, inadvertently or whatever, and there's a little bit of a way to remedy that, potentially. So, it's not necessarily something that's, if they're left out, that it can't be, but it's left, that would be left, for example, to the discretion of the moderator, whether or not the moderator wanted to do that. By having the standard known or made known to the town clerk, again, it basically puts the onus on, you give the example of the person who's served a couple of months in Bearcove Park, well, again, as I'm saying here, is that this is a sign of respect, you know, particularly to the, to, not the deceased, I mean, it's a sign of respect to deceased, but the benefit of it really goes to the, to their survivors, to their family and so forth. And so, basically, you know, by saying made or known or made known to the town clerk is to essentially put the onus on people. If they want to make sure that their family member, their deceased family member is mentioned, you know, they can simply check in with the town clerk and say, hey, you know, just want to check in with you and just, you know, again, confirm, you know, my father passed away, and his, you know, and the town clerk is free to say, well, you know, you got to give me some verification here, you know, give me an obituary if they passed away in Arizona. Give me an obituary, you know? Can you tell me what committee they happen to serve on? In other words, it's, that's, it's known or made known to the town clerk. So, the town clerk either knows it, and if they don't know it, then the onus is on someone else, not anybody in the town, the town government, to make it known to the town clerk. So, to those people, Bill, that might be upset, you know, you kind of have to say, well, I understand that you're upset, but you should have stepped up and said something, because basically, we're telling you, we're giving you this opportunity that your relative can be recognized. And so, they have to take some role and responsibility in making that happen.
Bill, you all set?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. I think my colleagues answered a couple of questions. I, when I first was a, when I first was a volunteer for the town, I remember sitting at a town meeting, and I was actually serving on the Bearcove Park Committee at the time. And earlier that year, a member of our committee died very unexpectedly, and we as a committee were just, it was just such a tough thing. And I remember sitting at town meeting when the names were announced, and I didn't hear her name, and I reached out, I reached out to the town administrator, Charlie Cristello at the time, and said, and said, I think I wrote him an email and said, you know, I didn't hear this person's name. And Charlie was great, and he responded right away, and he said, you know, it's our practice to recognize, to just recognize employees. And, you know, I sort of had two thoughts about it. I kind of understood, and at the same time, I knew, you know, I knew sitting at the time that that would have meant a lot, that that would have meant a lot to me and maybe to our committee members. And so, Tom, I sort of see where it's going. I think, I think kind of like Bill, that the part I'm a little uncomfortable... Bill, that, that the part I'm a little uncomfortable with is that, well, I, I think you're, you know, you've laid this out in a way that, 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 you know, as you're saying, there's no affirmative obligation on the town, but I think when we do things like this, the citizens expect us to do it well, and, and to do it completely, and because we don't control all of the information, as we do with the veterans' roles, or the retirement system, our best efforts on this just may not be good enough, and, and, and I, you know, while I appreciate that you've constructed this in a way that it, it is, you know, in terms of implementation, it's kind of incumbent on people to give us the names, I just wonder if I was sitting in the audience, and I was hearing the names of other volunteers who passed that year, and again, the name of my colleague on the Bearcove Park Committee's name wasn't mentioned, if I would have felt even worse? And I, I think, in particular, in, in the first year of, of somebody passing, there, you know, it's, we're all still kind of raw, we're missing them, and I think, while I, I totally agree with you that this would be a way to honor and remember, and be a nice tradition, I'm worried about the downside consequences, and I would hate to also have to put our town clerk, or any of us, in a position where if, if somebody did say, hey, you, you know, you forgot about this person or that person, I, I wouldn't wanna be put in the position of having to say, well, well, no, you know, we weren't notified about that, and I think that that would potentially go to the town clerk as well. It, it, I, I just, as I said, I worry that without us controlling the information, I, I'd say one other thing with respect to sort of the volunteer logs, is with, with our sort of talent bank and our roster, we have rosters of people who have volunteered for the town, but I would say that, you know, if, if we go back about ten years, some of that information, it's in different places, and sort of compiling some of that may be more difficult. I'd also just add one other, and it's more of a question, but we have, you know, we have two hundred people who volunteer for the senior center, we have veteran, we have people who volunteer for veteran services through the Valor Act, so, again, I would think that if we wanna recognize people who volunteer for the town, we, we wanna make sure that we're capturing everybody, because, you know, to your point, it's a town that runs on volunteers. So I, I, I appreciate where this is going, I'm, I'm struggling as Bill is with how it would be implemented, you know, I, I think maybe before we open it up to the public for questions, if, if you had any final, you know, kind of thoughts or responses to anything you've heard?
Well, again, to your, to your concern, Mary, that about, you know, that you felt terrible that, that individual's name wasn't mentioned, this would give you the opportunity, would have given you the opportunity to assure that that person's name was gonna be mentioned, and that, this is precisely what I'm talking about, is that it, it, you know, if people value, particularly if people value and they want that person to be recognized, and they understand that there's this mechanism out there to make this happen, it gives you that avenue to do that, and, and you had some very strongly held feelings about that, and that, and you are the exemplar of how that would, that would work. And, you know, again, no, no, no system is ever perfect, you do the best you can do. I think people understand the spirit in which it's, it's, it's being done, and, you know, from a, from a administrative point of view, as far as the, the volunteers for the senior center, that type of situation, I guess it's, you know, it's, it's like anything, you kind of have to, you have to kind of have a certain point where you say, well, this is, this is the group that we're, we're referring to, and basically, what I focused on was people who had more of an official role in town government, you know, essentially, you know, and I, that's what I was, that's what I wanted to focus on, because...
Okay.
You know, that, again, that's, so I hear what you're saying, Mary, but I think you're, you would be the, you know, you would be the best example of how, why it would work to get that person recognized. So, I guess that's...
Okay, yeah.
Some and substance of, of my response to your comment.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna open it up at this point, is there anyone in the public who either has a question or wishes to make a comment about Article BB? Okay, seeing none, Joe and Bill, are you ready, are you ready to, to move on this article, or would you prefer to vote it on a different night? I'm, I'm, I'm ready this evening if you are, but I, I guess I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I, Mary, I'd like to just, an opportunity to circle back with Keith and Eileen.
Okay.
That's okay.
Sure.
Just to ask them about the, the verification, the baby, the potential burden here, and making this decision, that, that's okay.
Of course, of course, so, Tom, if we took this back up again on Tuesday night, which is, I have to look at my, so that would be, I think, March ninth? Is that, I mean, would that be convenient for you?
Yep, I can sure do that.
Okay.
And I, I just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, please. That's okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you know, in this situation, on your vote, the rule of necessity kicks in, if there's no conflict of interest, because the three of you obviously would be the beneficiary of, of this bylaw, were it worth to pass, so, you know, I, I don't have a problem with any apparent conflict.
Okay, so I think what we'll do, Bill, if, 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 if all of us could be prepared on Tuesday, I think what we'll do is, we'll just kind of bring it back, if there's any additional points to make, and then, and then the board will take action on it, so, I, I think that, that'll conclude our discussion for Article BB tonight. Tom, thank you again for joining us tonight. The next item of business on our agenda is Article, thank you, is Article Y, which is the HMLP Proposed Transmission and Substation Project. So this is a, the board has, has taken this up, we took this up a few weeks ago, so, and I, I see some names of people on the call who the board has received information from, so let me just sort of set the table for how we'll, how we'll do this part of the discussion. I think what, what we, what we typically do in kind of a, you know, a second hearing, we'll first turn it over to, to HMLP, who are the proponents of the article, in the event that they wanna share any additional information with us. Then the next thing we'll do is we'll open it up to questions and comments from the board, and then we'll open it up to questions and comments from the public. So Paul, I see that we're joined by the General Manager, Paul Henyu, along with Tom Morahan, and I think I see Deirdre Lawrence, who is, I believe, counsel for HMLP. Paul, it looks like you are the co-host of the meeting, so I'm, I'm gonna turn this over to you for any additional comments or information, before we, we get into questions.
I realized I was the co-host, but...
Oh. I didn't know, I didn't know if you wanted to share your screen.
Everybody, I'm gonna have canopies.
Yeah, Paul, the, the host has to provide the hors d'oeuvres, so...
Sorry, if I had only known, I...
I, I didn't know if you had, like, any slides or any, any visuals to put up.
I, I do not, thank you.
Okay.
So I guess the only, not, not the only, because it, you know, I talked about it at the, at the first meeting with you, and at the abutters meeting, that, you know, presuming that town meeting votes to transfer the property to our control, and, you know, authorizes the bonding of the money, that is the first step in a probable two-year journey before multiple state regulatory boards, whose job it is to review proposed sites, and, uh, things like substations and transmission lines, and that, that's what they do all the time. And so, at, at all of those various points, anybody who has thoughts or wants to be heard is gonna be given that opportunity. So, you know, again, presuming town meeting votes yea, like I say, that's the first step, it's clearly not the last. So, you know, at this point, I guess that's all I have.
Okay, I will, I, I think I'll, I've got a few thoughts, but I think I'll also look to my colleagues. Joe, did you have any additional kind of questions or comments about Article Y?
Well, I know that we've gotten, all the selectmen received comments from neighbors, abutters to the property, and Paul, I received your letter today explaining the process, so I appreciate the effort you put into that. From, I'm, I'm looking at this, and I'm also looking at, for example, the public safety building, where we're going through a process, and we're requiring design, requiring, you know, a number of steps before any construction activity is, the funds are authorized, and then ultimately, where, where there would be any sort of, of real movement of one department over there. And what I'm seeing is that what, what's been proposed is sort of combined everything into one action, but I think Paul crafted the warrant in an appropriate way, because what it says, just pulling it up, is will the town authorize, the board has, authorize but not require the board of selectmen to transfer the care, custody, and management? So, assuming that the town voted in the affirmative on that article, it would be up to this board to determine whether or not the criteria had been met, whether or not whatever permits needed to be issued were issued, whether abutter concerns had been addressed, and then ultimately, we would make that determination as to whether or not to transfer. So the transfer of, and control, even though we would be authorized by town meeting, wouldn't necessarily happen immediately, and in fact, I think the process that Paul identified, going through various permitting processes, and making sure that there are ongoing communication with neighbors, would continue, and then it'd be up to this board to say, well, yep, they've met the appropriate criteria. So, Paul, is that consistent with your understanding how this would proceed?
It is to the, you know, extent of the, you know, the, the appearance before all the various regulatory boards, so yes, that is how I understand that to work.
Because I, I, I think that we need to make sure that the concerns of the neighbors are listened to and addressed, and I think Hingham Municipal Light is committed to that process, so...
We are.
I, I haven't heard anything different that would, that would, number one, address the need for this project, and number two, the commitment that we'll go through a process, and that the town warrant vote does not require, would not require an immediate transfer, and that there would be a process in place.
Correct.
So, I, I really don't have any further questions, because you haven't given us anything more, and no hors d'oeuvres, so I'm so disappointed.
Sarah, get the hors d'oeuvres!
Bill?
I'll be there in a minute.
Bill, Bill, questions or comments?
I took one same line to Joe, so, you know, obviously, we heard from a lot of the abutters this past week, I think they had some very valid concerns, a lot of, I think a lot of those concerns would be addressed with the permitting process, with zoning and planning. I, I'm just kind of, I'm just kind of wondering, Paul, it's, you know, with, Joe just referenced the public safety project, that has, has been parsed out in phases over years, you know, it started with a feasibility study, moving toward design money, it just, it just seemed like that process for that building was a lot slower, more methodical, and really laid out, and I'm just a little concerned we're moving really fast here. Joe, Joe made a good point about, you're still, you're still gonna come back after you get the permits, but I, I just have, hearing from the abutters, you know, recently, and looking at the process, I, a little concerned about it moving quickly, that's all I have.
So, Bill, you know, from your space, or, you know, given where you're sitting, it, it probably appears that way, but at the light plant, you know, we've been talking about this for a couple of years now, and, you know, we've been meeting, you know, weekly for probably, I don't know, six or seven months, and every other week for probably, you know, a year or so before that, so, you know, we've been looking at this for a while. Now, we haven't reduced, you know, everything that we've looked at to writing, but believe me, we've gone through it, and, and one of the things that we continually talk about, you know, at our meetings, is, okay, so what's the siting board gonna say? The siting board isn't gonna just accept, well, you know, I talked to so-and-so, and he said such and such, you know, it's, it's a very formal process, that, you know, once we are able to get started, you know, that they truly put you through the paces, and it allows for, you know, input from, from interested parties.
So, when, when you say that, like, for example, I'll just follow up on that, so, you know, if I'm a neighbor, and I live on Holbar Street, I'm worried about what happens if there's a fire up there, what's, what's the blast radius, you know, what, what would happen to the, the safety of people on, on, you know, the, the dead-end part of Old Holbar, or even maybe across the street from that? And, so you're saying through this regulatory process, all of that information comes out, so the abutters will know everything about things like that, like a fire, or, you know, something goes wrong up there, they're gonna know what mitigation's in place, not only visible mitigation, but also safety mitigation? I mean, we just don't know a lot about this, and I am concerned about it, like, we, you, you articulated the need for this project very, very well at our last meeting, and I couldn't agree with you more on the need. It just does seem to be, hey, here it is, move on it, we can deal with these other concerns later, so that's, that's really my only pause.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, and, and the things that you talked about do get reviewed and discussed, and, you know, looked at closely.
Okay, thanks.
Um, yeah, I, I think, for me, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna try to sort of repeat what my colleague said, I think, Paul, for, for me, I'm still, I'm still a little, I'm still a little confused in the sense that our board was not made aware of this until January twentieth, when the warrant article came, and on one hand, I'm, I'm hearing that, you know, that this has been something that's been worked on for a very long time, but I think, I think outside of HMLP, there hasn't been, there hasn't been as much of an awareness, and so, you know, as, as like, we're gonna see from Bill Reardon and the Harvard Development Committee in a few minutes, you know, one, one important thing, I think, is kind of bringing the town and bringing people along. I, I agree with Bill, I think this is a really great idea, and I think that, you know, one of the things, when I think about me voting, and I view, I view this board, you know, we will have a few touchpoints in this, but essentially, what I would say that is, is if I'm voting to support this tonight, I'm basically saying to town meeting, hey, town meeting, I've done enough of my due diligence, that I think this is the right site, I think this is the right thing, and I'm willing to, let's go out and borrow fifty-five million dollars in, in order to make that happen, and while I think this is a very good idea, I just don't feel like I personally have enough information to, to represent to this, to the citizens of Hingham, that I'm, I'm satisfied with this going forward. I'm not saying I can't get there, but I can't get there right now, and, and I would also say that I think I had, I had a lot of those reservations, even before we started getting letters from the abutters, I think for me, the letters that we received from the abutters confirmed some of, some of my reluctance. Now, having said that, one thing that, that Tom and I talked about late today, and, and Tom, I might ask you to kind of jump in here, is that I do understand that, that in this process, you have to go through state regulatory boards, and I understand that you're not in a position right now to answer some of the questions, and that without, without doing some of this work, you can't answer the questions. So I, I might just turn it over to Tom Mayo at this point, because I think Tom had a, a suggestion about a potential path that could start moving us in that direction, but that might be, might be a little bit different in scope than what's, than what's being asked for here, because I think for me, there are a lot of decisions, there are a lot of things that, this article is written, I'm feeling like I'm being asked to say yes to a lot of things that today, right now, I'm not comfortable saying yes to, I can get there. I can get there with information. Um, Tom, perhaps you could, you know, share sort of some of your thoughts about how we could potentially, an alternate path to go forward?
Sure, and, you know, just some concepts. And by the way, John Cofflin is here too, if we, um, if we have questions for him. Um, so knowing that there was some concern from the residents, the neighborhood, uh, as well as from having heard from each of you, uh, during the week, knowing there was some concern about the, uh, the relative, um, lack of information to ta- to try to enforce the, the, uh, an approval. What I started thinking about was an alter- an alternative, an alternate approach, which would be to certainly ask town meeting to ask, to authorize this board to transfer the property, uh, as has, as was the plan. Um, and as Joe stated, you know, the transfer could occur after the town was, or after the board was, was shown that this was in fact the right prop- pretty, uh, you know, after, uh, an exhaustive, uh, research effort and site assessments and the like. Um, and that stuff, that probably has to happen anyway. Um, so I don't know that that causes any delay. Perhaps that could be done by a consultant in the meantime, between now and, uh, town meeting or, or shortly after town meeting or whatever, to help the board understand that this parcel is the right parcel to even, even be considering. Um, that would be step one. Step two would be to, if necessary, and I don't know the light plant's reserves, um, uh, situation, but either, um, one option would be to ask the town to, uh, consider, uh, a borrowing, uh, up to a certain amount of money, a million or $2 million, to help the, with the light plant put together their due diligence work, um, through consultant agencies to, uh, figure out whatever needs to be figured out. Site assessment, design work, um, preliminary design, feasibility, uh, and the like. That would allow the light plant to get enough information to come back to you. And I think all that has to happen anyway, as well as site design. Once they prove that the site was the right site, they come back to you guys, to the board of selectmen, tell you that this is the right site. If you agree, you transfer the property, then they can, now they own the property, they can do all the design work that they wanna do. And hopefully that design work can all be completed in time for next year's town meeting. Um, to, to bring to town meeting for authorization for the full, um, for the full bor- uh, borrowing to actually construct the facility. Again, once it's, once it's shown along the way that this is the, the correct site and we have a, an agreed upon design or a socialized design that everybody can, can, um, understand and, and get behind.
Yep. So Tom.
Yeah, Paul, I just, Bill, I think has a hand here. Bill?
Just, Tom, thank this suggestion. So let me just be clear. So, and I'm, we might need John Cofflin here too. So you're saying the town meeting, your, your recommendation is the town meeting article would be amended to allow a borrowing of about one or 1.2? And then could we transfer the, could we transfer the property after town meeting or would that be part of the article as well?
Right now, the article, and John can jump in, but the article is written in such a way that, um, we would be able to do all this within the existing language in the article. So there, there's not a number contemplated in the article right now. That's something that was gonna be evaluated during this process between the board of selectmen and ultimately advisory will set that number. Um, but the authorization to transfer the property or not was already contemplated that way in the existing article. So there's really no need to change any language in the article. But John, if you have any, um,
Yeah, I think, um, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, great. Yeah, I think the, the thing to keep in mind, and we all know this, is the, the article itself is just the question. I mean, that is the agenda item at town meeting. And it's a pretty broad question. So it has a, a potential to transfer the property, not a requirement. It authorizes the selectman. It also authorizes borrowing for a sum of money without being specific. So I think it really is the, the advisory committee's motion that comes out the other end. Um, that could be narrowing scope in the way the article is written. It couldn't be beyond the scope, but it could certainly be within the scope and it could be a narrower motion. Um, you don't have to give the authorization to transfer the property now. You could do a dollar amount that's lower, uh, to do some initial, um, study, uh, to see whether the property's feasible. So I really think it's the, the motion that comes out the other side, not so much the article itself. The article is fairly broad right now and, and encompasses just about the entire project from beginning to end. So you could pull a piece of that out if that's what they wanna do.
And Tom, just for my clarity, I mean, one, one of the things for me that I would be interested in, in being, in confirming is that this is the right site. So, so, you know, I, I know, I know HMLP has considered other sites. I know some of that work is being packaged, but I, I wouldn't want a warrant article that, that says, we're gonna transfer the parcel because, like, I don't think I'm there yet. Is, is that what you're saying or you're saying that you would give the board the option down the road?
So the article that was crafted with HMLP gives, already gives the board that, uh, it, it's to authorize but not require to transfer the property. So you would have the authority to transfer the property at whatever time you felt appropriate as a board.
Tom, what, what I'm hearing from Mary is that it creates a presumption that the board of selectmen have determined that this is the right site.
Yeah, that's.
And Mary is not there yet. And, and to, and what we did if her, for, um, public safety is we actually did that site assessment first to make a determination about whether or not the site was
Right.
the right site.
That's right.
Then we did the vote about whether or not this would be, you know, let's, let's buy the property. In that case, here, we already own it, that the transfer. And so how, I think Mary's question is, are we putting, what is it, the cart before the horse? Um,
Yeah, it's Thursday night. I don't know what goes first on.
Right.
Yeah, it becomes the question, i- it becomes the question, Joe, of perception versus legality. Um, I think John would tell us that you wouldn't be required to transfer it, but is the perception there if town meeting authorized you to do that? Probably.
Yeah, so, uh, that's right. And so I think we, the, the warrant article would give the, um, the board of selectmen the authority, but not the requirement. And we certainly would address the issues that Mary's raised, that, that we all have, um, to make sure that this is the right site. I don't know if the motion can be crafted in a way to remove the presumption that in fact we've made a determination that this is the right site. Because in fact, Mary's right, we have not seen that site assessment. I know HMLP has gone through a process. We have not gone through that. Um, so we need to, we need to satisfy ourselves.
And, and, and just to add, um, uh, you know, I also understand that town meeting comes once a year. And so I also understand that if we, you know, if, if, if we don't have the authority to transfer it and, and let's say that collectively, we all agree in six months that this is the right site, we would then lose six months because we'd have to wait for the next town meeting. So I, I understand there's a bit of a trade off there. Um, I'm sorry, John Cofflin, did, did you wanna add something to this?
No, I think that, uh, the point you just made, I think is, is an important one, Mary. What I was saying before is the motion that would, that could come out of advisory committee, um, could be a motion that would not include the authorization to transfer. I mean, that is contemplated as one of the actions under this warrant article. But, um, the motion could come out the other side without that authorization. It could simply be to appropriate a sum of money, um, to look into this. Um, but if you don't get that authorization, you're right, you, you'd have to wait until another town meeting to get it in the future. If you have it in hand, you can use it or not use it.
Yep. Um, Paul, uh, I'm sorry, you, I think you wanted to jump in and, um, you've been, we, we've been sort of talking about a lot of different pieces of this.
Yeah, so the, you know, the citing board, they deal with this issue all the time. And, and nobody wants, you know, electric facilities next to their house. We get that. But the town, you know, the, I'm, I'm, I'm not exaggerating. We had a windstorm the other night, tree came over, took down power lines. There's nothing magical about those trees alongside that green bush right away that's gonna keep them up in the air any better than those trees that came, that tree that came over on Lozelle Street the other night. The difference being, tree comes over on Lozelle Street, we're able to take care of it toot sweet. We got everybody back in a couple of hours. Transmission lines come down, we have to wait for ever source. It's a, it's a long process. And, and by putting another line in, completely separate from the other, underground, just makes the system so much more reliable. It, the, in the citing board has technical people who are able to evaluate what we're putting before them as the, is this the right place? And they ask us, what have you done? Where else have you considered? And if they are of the opinion that we haven't done our due diligence, they send us packing. But they, they live this stuff. They're technical people. They understand it. They know it. And with, with all due respect to everybody, you know, you guys aren't engineers, you know, you guys don't deal with this all the time. You know what I mean?
No, but, but we are, but, but, but there are members of the community who could be affected by this. And in, in, in our open town meeting form of government with extensive citizen participation, we make big decisions in Hingham. There's an expectation here that we, that we all make them together. And, um, and, and I understand what you're saying about the state regulatory boards having technical expertise. But it's also important in this process that, that the citizens, that the citizens get to engage in the process as well. And, um, uh, you know, I, I guess what, what I would ask you, Paul, is what, what Tom is proposing, which I think is, you know, I think what we're trying to do here is to be responsive to, you know, your desire to address a reliability and a capacity issue, which, which we understand. Um, but also a process, a process that's going to result in town meeting approval, you know, as, as it goes through. Is, is the suggestion about potentially, um, reducing the scope to, you know, funding to, to, to move some of this along? I mean, it, it's, i- is that an option that could keep this going?
To be honest with the, I mean, you know, this is, this is Thursday night. This is the first time I'm hearing it.
Sure. Is it something, Paul, that, um, and, and I, I realize that, um, you know, it's been a long week for all of us. And, um, i- is this something that perhaps, um, Tom and John Cofflin and you and Deirdre? You know, what, what, what I might, what I might propose is that, um, you know, maybe we give you folks a little bit of time here to, to sort of talk through maybe this option. And it, it might, um, you know, now you've had a chance to hear some of the concerns of the board. Um, I think we, uh, we, uh, we understand some of the constraints that you're under. Um, I, I would, I would prefer to have some more conversation about an al- an alternative that would be, that, that would work for everybody. Um, you know, versus taking a no action vote tonight. Um, cause I, I, I think, you know, I think if I were to take a vote tonight, it would be, it would be for no action. Um, if, if we want a little bit of time to see if we could work something out, happy to do that.
Yeah, so, I mean, clearly, we want this thing to happen, right? Otherwise, we're not putting ourselves through this. So if, and, and we, you know, I, I committed in that letter, I committed at the first meeting for the board of selectmen and I committed at the butters meeting to have meetings with folks. So I'm certainly amenable to trying to, to find a way to make this happen. But, so I'll, I'll stop there, yes. So I, I'm amenable to say Tom and John and Deidre and, you know,
Yeah.
and figure it out.
Yeah. Okay, uh, maybe at this point, I know there's some people, um, who have joined for this and some of you have corresponded. Um, is there anyone in the public who either has a question or wishes to make a comment about Article Y? Uh, so, okay, so I see, I'm gonna recognize, um, uh, I'm gonna recognize Mr. Reska. If you could please, um, when, um, if you could please, uh, give your name and address for the record. And may I ask you please, and anyone else who's commenting, to please direct your comments and questions to the chair? And then I, I'll deflect the questions to others as necessary. Mr. Reska?
Thank you. It's Phil Reska. It's 198 Hobart Street. Thanks for your power. And again, when we met one week ago, Thursday night, again, probably everybody a little fatigued from the week. But, um, but it was the first, I guess we had watched the selectman meeting after seeing this as a news article to learn about it. Um, we weren't aware that it had gone to the conservation commission with site plans and so on. But again, across our, our small neighborhood, folks, and we are close to the existing substation. So we do get incredibly reliable electric power, as does the rest of the town. And we certainly appreciate that. And we see the trucks in the bad weather and everything. So, so again, we, we absolutely are beneficiaries of a, a well-run municipal light plant. What we don't know, and, and Mr. Ramsey talked to it, is we are close to that substation. So I don't know exactly what the management plans and what the risks are. And in talking about the, the lines that we have now that are aerial and come into that substation, Ms. Henyou identified, you know, a train derailment, a large vehicle that, you know, at speed that could take out one of these large poles on Hobart Street. I'm not sure the trees all reach that high. But, um, but those were the kinds of things he assessed as risks in our butters meeting. Um, and we, you know, we're certainly not opposed to burying those lines. But, but what he talked about was a line originating somewhere else and coming to town, which would obviously most likely have other butters for that buried line passage that, that's undeclared at this point. Um, and then showing up at a, a piece of property, you know, less than 300 feet from us that would then be turned into dimensions unknown in, into a substation. So that's really unsatisfying and it makes you kind of peel back what, what's going on here. So as he said at the February 11th meeting, he repeated our meeting, a reliability issue happened at a storm and some years ago in the winter. And, and subsequent to that, there was a second repair action on, on one of those two lines. And he said, you know, if the second line had failed at that point, yes, the town would have lost power. Makes me ask, what is the documented reliability? What are other municipalities used to measure? I mean, again, what was contrasted by Hingham Light was, you know, how it has noticeably more electrical problems and so on. So again, we're, we're beneficiaries of a, a well-run operation. But I wonder what measurements they use when they decide that, that ratepayers need a $50 million investment? And that's, you know, that, that just piques my interest. What, how does that part work? And then you get into, well, and then where do you put new infrastructure? And again, what was talked about, I guess, a couple of years ago, they, they tried something for surge needs to use generator trailers. And after not finding receptive audience right in our neighborhood, they put them up in the industrial park in South Hingham. And, and again, as Ms. Henyou pointed out, we're not engineers, but somehow they were able to pull great capacity there. So again, if you're gonna add other plant or, and if this is more than a reliability concern, we keep ours reliability concerned. But if it's a capacity concern, maybe look at where those other loads are gonna be and you, you start planning that way. Um, again, I'm on butters, so I, I don't want it. I'll be clear about that. But I'm a premature that these options have been explored. We were offered actuarial graphics a week ago, but they're a very tight version of our neighborhood. And so again, areas that are wet or areas that encroach into the transfer station operations. And that was part of what we learned is apparently there was some outreach by the light plant to see if they could expand the footprint of the current substation. And the transfer station people or the town or somebody declined on that. Again, with no dimensions offered, it would seem like something you wouldn't wanna agree to. But, but again, other options there, other innovations in how to lay this out that would, you know, concentrate that, save some more driveways, keep all the work in one spot. The things that, you know, that can be explored as, as I think is, you know, at least being proposed, you know, a smaller feasibility look to, to look for something that, that would just have more beneficiaries. So really, e- even in that small footprint, some of the property was, you know, non-considered because, or at least our understanding is it was non-considered because either it was wet or fell under Article 97, I think they talked about, where the state would have to take action. And again, if you move that away from the neighbors and put it next to the transfer station, which is already an industrial footprint of sorts, um, maybe that would be more amenable, even if we had to have, you know, support through the legislature for that. I know that's not a, the slam dunk that, um, that basically the, the town offering a piece of property and planting this thing right away is. But that, that's the context of, of where my comments are coming from, where my concerns.
Thank you. Yeah. And, um, I just, I just wanna mention that, um, you, at the beginning of your ma- your remarks, you had mentioned something about the conservation commission. And I, I would just tell people that it is very common, um, that when, you know, when, when there are projects in town, whether it's an HMLP project or a developer or many different things, oftentimes at the start of a project, um, you know, the, a, a project proponent will go talk to some of our permitting boards just to get some general information. Um, any sort of permitting activity has to be in a publicly posted, you know, it has to be in a public meeting with the butters notified. to be in a public meeting with the butters notified, but I I just want to assure you that those conversations that happen, um, they happen, you know, they they're very common um in municipal government, just to sort of sit, you know, get get some basic information to get going with things. So, um, you know, again, to the extent that anything becomes more definitive, that becomes part of the public process. Um, anyone else with a question or comment relative to Article Y? Okay, um, see, oops, uh, um, I'm gonna recognize um, uh, Mr. Whit- Mr. Whittemore, and if you could give your name and address for the record, please?
There we go, I head on you here. It's, uh, Jack Whittemore, 200 Old Hobart Street, Hingham.
Good evening.
My concern along the way here, along with Mr. Reska and the others, is the property, the size and scope of the, uh, project that's there, and the and the location of it. But when the, um, when the town of, when the, I'm sorry, the people in the transfer station said that there was no room available, no room with the end, in essence, they didn't know how much room was needed. So, you know, uh, again, I don't think any of us really want to stop and say that we're trying to, um, stop Hingham Light from trying to bring in a third, a third line, a line that's gonna be beneficial for all of us. It's just the location of it.
Sure.
So, I think it's just not, uh, like everyone else doesn't want it in their back door. Well, it's not necessarily in their back door, it's in the front yard of of our neighbors here, as well as, we'll see some of it, we'll get part of that, that. But I think along the way here, that there was also a piece of land that was discussed that's just off of the, um, transfer station area that falls within the conservation, that may not necessarily be truly restricted, uh, just something that we we, maybe they could really look at it under the Article 97, something we can really, that would not impact of the, uh, the site itself that they're talking about, still be able to do what they want, if they're not there.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Um, Ms. Achilles?
Sorry, I had to take you off commute there. Um, I just was hoping that I could just have-
Name and address for the record, please?
It's Kelly Achilles, 194 Old Hobart Street.
Thank you.
Um, I was just hoping that I could have just a minute to sort of address our concerns as the direct abutter to the current transfer station and substation. Um, there's probably nobody else in town who deals as directly with the existing station as we do here, and to look out our front window and see that this new proposed station is a mere 25 feet from our property line is obviously of a great concern to us. Um, as it is now, we do the daily workings with the substation, um, it's, our driveways are adjacent to each other, so we know what the workings are. For us, um, and what other people in town may not know, is just how that works. The substation runs 24/7, 365 days a year. If the lights go out, the workers are over there. It's just the way, the way it works, the way it operates. Um, and so to add another layer of that, um, i- it, it really changes our, our, our property, and in our neighbors as well. So, for us, um, at least here in this house, the details that people keep asking for, the the plans, the details, you know, being told, oh, we can make this look like a house, and it'll blend in with the neighborhood, as I said in our meeting last week, in our abutters meeting, um, that's really just putting pearls on a pick, because you're still, uh, you're operating, it's a substation, it's not a residence. So you can make it look like a center entrance colonial, um, you can put some bushes in front and, you know, have a nice trim on it, but at the end of the day, it's not a residence. It is a substation. So for it to blend in, it may blend into the everyday passerbyers as they drive by, but for us who live here and my neighbors, it's not a residence. Uh, so for us, no matter what you put there, no matter what your details are, no matter what the planning is, the the scope of the project, the dollar amount, it's the wrong location. Um, I'm, I know we talked about it last week too, about the conservation land and the Article 97, and and this could take years to get through different court systems, but it was also addressed that the ultimate goal of this plan was to help with Hingham Net Zero, which is, the ultimate goal was, what, I believe, 2040 or 2045? So it sounds to me like we have some time, and to put this in our front yard and decrease the property values of myself and my neighbors, is that the right expense? You know, what is the expense we're putting at? We've got six neighbors here that are now living in an industrial park. And to add to that, I personally am a little nervous about bringing in any more power, electricity, or anything else. I've, since living here, we've had one child who's gone through 18 rounds of chemotherapy. I'm not interested in challenging that again. Uh, we don't know where that came from, but no one can say that it didn't. So, I'm, I'm definitely opposed to this project in any capacity in my front yard, um, for the safety and well-being of my neighbors, myself, my children, and the value of our home.
Yep. Thank you. Um, anyone else? Um, yes, I I, uh, is it Natalie Whittemore?
Good evening, and, uh, thank you. Um, I, I just want to say, I've been here 43 years, and I I am totally confused as to how a residential area, and I believe we are a residential area, we were given, you know, occupancy permits, the town allowed these homes to be built, uh, has very slowly turned into what is appearing to be a commercial, um, area. And and I would like some clarification on that, because I I, I'm just not seeing how all of this commercial, um, it's even being thought that any more commercial business would be brought so close to all of us. Thank you.
And Mrs. Whittemore, I know your husband just gave his address for the record-
Oh, I'm sorry, 200 Old Hobart Street.
That's okay. Um, I'm just gonna ask, um, Tom Mayo, and I'm gonna put you on the spot here, sorry about that, but, um, uh, with respect to Mrs. Whittemore's question, and I I don't want to turn this into a permitting board hearing, much as Bill Ramsey and 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 Joe Fisher might like that, because it's it's where they're coming from, but i- in terms of just the question about sort of what can be, you know, what can be constructed as of right within, within this area and the zoning?
It's good, if we don't want this to be-
Can you answer Tom, or?
Yeah, if we don't want this to be a regulatory board, you're, you're, I'm the right person to ask, because I, we woefully out of place. Um, so what I can do is, I can tell you what I think we saw at our February meeting, from uh, our zoning administrator, Emily Wentworth, when she put the zoning map up on the screen, and kind of spoke to some of the, um, the affected zones in the area. Um, I I don't have that committed to memory, I I I will say that this, that this use wasn't accept, wasn't a, an approved use on the, in the zone that it was for being proposed in. Um, but, Ms. Whittemore, yeah, we'd have to get you a copy of that zoning, um, map to show that to you.
Okay, um, and and so, um, uh, you know, I think at this point, and and I appreciate everybody's, um, everybody's comments, I think, you know, to kind of pull this back to the question that's before our board tonight, which is the question of Article Y. Um, as I've been listening to this conversation, I was thinking, um, that these are some important conversations to have, and I I can't think of a worse place to have these conversations than on the floor of town meeting, um, when we have hundreds of people. Um, and I think that if we go ahead with Article Y as written tonight, that's what's going to happen. Um, and I think that what I'm seeing is that, is that there are, uh, there are a number of questions about how this process might unfold, um, points at which interested citizens can ask questions and get answers. Um, certainly, HMLP wants to move ahead, um, with an important infrastructure project that is, you know, focused on continuing the same, maintaining the excellent service that that we are so fortunate to get from HMLP. Um, what what I'm gonna suggest is that we, um, we continue this, uh, we not take a vote tonight. Um, Tom, perhaps, you know, tomorrow, you could, you know, we could, we could decide whether or not this will be ready to talk about on Tuesday, the Tuesday, the, um, whatever day Tuesday will be, I think it's the 9th. Um, I'm just mindful of the advisory committee, if we need to push it off to the 16th, we can do that. Um, to, you know, the folks who are interested, we can let you know when this article, you know, comes back, but I think what I'd like to try to do is to, um, have, have us work with HMLP to see if there's a way to, a way to move forward that ensures that, um, citizens, particularly those directly affected, are comfortable with the process, the way they will be able to engage, so that their voices are heard as important decisions are made. Um, I'm not sure what that looks like right now, but I think we'd, we'd like to try to do that in a way that is responsive to the feedback we've heard tonight, and in letters, and that is also responsive to, um, what HMLP is looking to try to do. Um, so, Paul, perhaps we can, you know, reconvene tomorrow and and have some conversations, if that works for you and your team?
Yeah, so, who's "we"?
So, um, I think, I think my understanding is that this will be, um, Mr. Mayo and potentially, uh, John Coughlin, uh, yourself, uh, I see Mr. Mr. Moorehand's on the line, I see Ms. Lawrence is on the line.
Okay, I I didn't just know who you were talking about.
Yeah, sorry.
Who's the "we"? You, you earlier talked about Tom and John Coughlin, you know, I didn't know, I was gonna have to bring hors d'oeuvres for Michelle, she's a big eater, she likes her canopy. You know, Bill Ramsey, you know, he's a pepperoni pizza guy.
Yeah.
What am I gonna need to bring?
Just yourself, just yourself.
Perfect, okay.
Now, I, I think, um, uh, okay, uh, I I think we're gonna conclude the discussion tonight on, um, on Article Y. Um, Paul, I appreciate you and your team, um, listening and being responsive to some of the things you've heard. We'd like to try to work with you to figure out a way to advance this that works for everybody.
And we want to make it happen, right? We want to keep the lights on.
We, no, we, we, we understand that, and, um, you know, it's, it's, it's not lost on us that, um, you know, when, when neighboring communities are out for days at a time and things, our our lights are on, and and we understand that, um, that you folks work hard to do that, and, um, so we'll, we'll, we'll continue this discussion. And thank you to everybody who, um, who attended to hear this. Um, our next article is Article Z. Uh, this is the reconstruction of town pier, this is the second time, goodnight, Paul, this is the second time that, uh, the board is hearing this article. Uh, we're joined by, uh, members of the Harvard Development Committee Chair Bill Reardon, uh, I see Marco Boer, I see Peter Branigan, uh, I apologize if I'm, if I'm missing anybody. Um, Tom, uh, I'm gonna put you on the spot again, but perhaps if, um, if you wanted to just sort of recap, uh, sort of where you think this article is, I think, uh, the board was, um, talking about taking a vote tonight, and, um, Tom, maybe you could, um, just kind of recap some of the conversations that you've had with us as individual board members? We'll, we'll then give Mr. Reardon a chance to, uh, chime in with any additional information. I know we're also joined by town engineer J.R. Fry.
All right, thank you, Mary. So at the, at our last meeting, um, uh, Chair, uh, Chair Reardon of the Harvard Development Committee came in and kind of explained the long history of this project, and the importance of it, and and the plan, and how we got to that plan. Um, and then we started talking a little bit about the, uh, some of the more recent discussions with the Conservation Commission, and some of the concerns that were raised there. I can tell you that since then, we have engaged, uh, the Woods Hole Group in a contract to evaluate, um, some of the concerns raised by members of the Conservation Commission. Um, so that work is now underway. Um, the delivery date is, J.R. will tell me before I finish this sentence.
Late April.
Six weeks, six weeks from tomorrow. There we go, so six weeks, um, or or to some point around there. Um, so that work's happening, which is good, that that will help us understand some of the concerns that were raised by those folks. Um, I will say that in having so spoken, uh, spoken with some of you, I would say that, um, you know, before we s- before we continue, before anyone pipes in, Mary, I just wanna, I don't know, I want to make sure Bill doesn't have a quorum of his group. Um, I don't know-
I cannot have a quorum, I I didn't know about this meeting until Thursday evening, so we have two other members, so we are not a quorum, we are three of seven.
Yep, right.
Great, thanks, Tom.
So, yep, I just wanted to make sure before we got going, and anybody spoke up and said something. Um, the, uh, so in talking with the three of you, and hearing some of, um, you know, just talking it through, I think it's part of what I'm hearing is, you know, if we were to move forward with this project this year, we have to remember that the, um, that the authorization to borrow is just that, it's an authorization, it's not a mandate, and we would have an opportunity to to either borrow or not borrow, um, the board of selectmen would, based on, in large part, what we hear from the Woods Hole Group, and how we analyze it, and and work that information into our situation here in Hingham. Um, so, it's not a, it's not a, if you were to borrow money, uh, the, if you were to get authorization to borrow money at town meeting, it's, that's not like, you know, we, we're, we have $5 million, we're gonna plow forward. That's an authorization to move forward if it's appropriate to do so. So, um, that said, I I don't know, but that that's what I've talked with, with several of you about.
Okay, yeah, um, Bill, I didn't know if you had anything to add in terms of information?
Uh, let me, I I think Tom has summarized nicely, you know, what factually has occurred since we last met, and that Woods Hole Group has begun their work, their their projection is six to seven weeks. Uh, that does mean that, you know, realistically, if we were to get something in late April, to digest it is gonna require some time on our part, and on the Conservation Commission's part. Uh, I I have mentioned, I think, to several of you that we have tried to, uh, work it with Woods Hole, that we will have interim opportunities to converse with them, so that if in the, in the course of their work, they come on, you know, something that's quite significant in terms of, you know, a different, a different perspective, a different view that would cause a different design, then obviously that's something we can take with us, you know, right up to town meeting time. But we, we, we won't know that, you know, for now, nor when we, uh, meet in front of the advisory committee, which is tentatively scheduled for for next Tuesday. The only things I I would add, I want to just, you know, add a couple of facts that have become clear, or or information points that have become clearer to me in the, in the interim. Uh, we did go back to Bills and Thomas to get the, their estimate for what the, what the number would be. This is not in the, in the board article itself, it would be in the recommendation coming out of advisory. You know, the total, their projection is, uh, $5.65 million. It, that's, that's basically a, an inflation adjustment over a very detailed analysis that they did a year ago. There have not been any significant new, uh, arrangements in, in other towns that would have given them any more information on that. The other thing I I have, um, researched, and J.R. has worked hard on this in the interim, is to look at the alternatives for, for, uh, funding outside of the town. You know, this is, this is akin to the dredging situation, where, you know, we, we had to make a recommendation that the town would authorize up to a dollar amount, but knowing that we were going to seek grants from, from the state, uh, to to reduce that amount. And we have, uh, I I was aware of the Municipal Vulnerability Program Action Grants, that's one forum. Uh, Joe Fisher is well aware of FEMA, is a, is a federal agency that that does respond to these. We all know the Seaport Bond Council, Marco Boer passed me an article, uh, yesterday, where the town of Plymouth just received a million dollar grant for a reconstruction of their town pier from the Seaport Bond Council. And finally, and and the, the new one for me was the, um, Executive Office of Environmental Affairs in the Governor's, uh, office. And J.R., correct me if I'm wrong, I think the potential grant opportunity there is up to $3 million.
That's correct.
The point is that there, there are multiple sources, uh, in addition to Tom's point that we're not authorizing a spend until we actually are actually doing something, you know, which is after the permitting process. And and the permitting is, you know, it starts with conservation, but it then goes to the Army Corps of Engineers, and the Department of Environmental Affairs, or TCR. So we're, we're, we're far from actually- So we're, we're, we're far from actually spending and therefore borrowing this money. But if we don't um step up and and put, you know, some skin in the game, potential skin in the game, then our our openings uh for going after these grants are significantly reduced. It's really hard to get money if you haven't told those funding agencies that you're committed, you're committed to moving ahead with this project. So I think those are, those are the key things that I would add, Mary, that is sort of new information since we last met.
Thank you. Um Joe Fisher, you're the the board's liaison to Harvard Development. So maybe we'll, we'll lead off with you with uh either questions or comments uh relative to Article Z.
Well, um thank you, Mary, and thank you, Bill, and really to your committee as well for for the work and J R. Um I think it was a year ago when I first, I think it was a year ago that when I first got involved. And the question that I asked then was, we were talking about various heights of what was gonna be done. And did, did the height of what was going to be proposed affect our ability to get grants? And that was the initial question that I had. Seems like you're really, you know, you've gone out and you're, you're really looking at uh what money is available. And this is a roundabout way of saying that the amount of money and the source of that money may in fact impact what this project looked like. So if there's a sizable amount of funds, but we need to have certain aspects of the project to qualify for that, for those funds, there's gonna be a feedback as to what the height and what, or what the scope of the project would be. Um but the safety issues that you raised a year ago haven't gone away, it's gotten worse. Uh the need to address climate change hasn't gone away, it's very pressing. Uh and so I think we absolutely need to address this and take this step. So I am, I am supporting this.
Thank you, Joe. Bill?
Uh the article um is asking town meeting to uh appropriate how much potentially?
Up to five point six five million, Bill.
All right, um you know, given the fact that we can, we can put, put forth the article and still get some of these questions answered, I think it's great. And um Joe's right, I mean, this problem's not gonna go away. It's only gonna get worse over time, you know, we, since this, since that flooding happened a couple of years ago, every nor'easter we get, it's a potential for some serious flooding down there. Um so uh Bill Reardon, Marco, entire committee, uh cannot thank you enough for all the work you've done here. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill. Um yeah, and I would, I would thank everybody as well. I think um when we first heard this, I was trying to wrap my head around um the work from the Woods Hole Group. And, you know, in an ideal situation, we would have that information right now. Um but things are never ideal. And I think one of the things I was struggling with was um was whether, whether that information and what, whether that might be an impediment to getting town meeting support for a very necessary project that we've been working through for many years on a really methodical basis. Um I think I've said earlier with an article, we always wanna bring a warrant article to town meeting when we've got the wind at our back. And, you know, when we have all, you know, when we have all the information and and we can respond to everything. Um and I think sometimes when there are questions that we can't answer, sometimes the warrant article, you know, th- things get away from us. Um I think through uh conversations with with Tom and and with Bill and I, you know, you were both very generous with your time. I think I've understood that, I've understood how the Woods Hole information might inform things that can be addressed in a permitting process. And um and I just kind of needed to think through that to get comfortable with the idea. Um I understand that the permitting for this is going to take a good amount of time. Bill, I think you said it, the permitting could take two years.
I don't, I don't, I don't, the target is quite as long as that, Mary, but it's certainly a year's worth.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's going to be, and and I'm also looking and saying, and thinking that um in particular uh once we have, once we have the town, town meeting approval, we have skin in the game. And that best positions Hingham to bring state and federal dollars in for this important work. Um I also, I mean, it's, it's just my gut feel, um but, you know, as I look at the Biden administration, I see a, a more renewed focus on climate change. And I would wonder whether, you know, whether it's in the form of elements of the Biden Rescue Plan or other administrative priorities, whether there may be additional funding opportunities for projects like this. And I think part of our job is to position Hingham, and this is what we've talked about for a long time, to be best positioned, um that Hingham can take advantage and bring some of those dollars in. So, you know, so sort of fa- factoring all that in, um I would, I would join my colleagues in concluding that um this is the right time to bring this before town meeting. Um I think it's, uh I appreciate that you've, the arrangement that you have with the Woods Hole Group um as they're doing their work and um uh but I do think that we should uh, that we should put this through. And just as a, as a clarity, this will be a borrowing, is that correct?
That's, that's the expectation, yes, ma'am.
So one of the things that um Bill, you may, you know, you may wanna do, um and and certainly, you know, we can help with this. But um, you know, in terms of the borrowing, um I would expect that this would be non-excluded debt, not excluded debt. And so um we might, you know, it might be worthwhile to, and you know, Sue Nickerson could help with this, is to just look at, um you know, get an estimate of the sort of year one, you know, the year one and then the average debt service and just an indication of when that might hit. Again, if if this was approved by town meeting in this spring, um and let's say the permitting took a year, um this, the excluded debt service would probably not be material until after the work is completed, which is maybe three to four years. I I just think that's gonna be an important consideration because the advisory committee right now, you know, as as we're trying to settle the budget, they're looking not just at this year, but the next few years. And so I think they're gonna wanna know, um, you know, if the debt service impact will be of a material amount and and when it might hit. Um, you know, and again, if if we think about that, that's one further reason why this would be a good time to move ahead because um, you know, interest rates being what they are, um and the feeling from the Fed that the rates will, they intend to keep the rates low, um, you know, might, might give us the advantage when we do go out to bond um that uh, that that this will be done uh in a relatively low interest rate environment. So um that's another consideration. Uh Bill?
Yeah, we just observed, uh and we're, we're fortunate, uh the the liaison for this article is Libby Claypool, who is, uh as you know, both on the capital, uh capital uh sub group of of the advisory. And she's also just very good with all of this excluded debt, non-excluded debt and the circumstances.
Yeah, I mean, my, my guess would be that if if we were doing this, the non-excluded debt would hit in, you know, fiscal year twenty five or fiscal year twenty six. And, you know, five, five million dollars, um, you know, we, we financed the water company for two point one four five percent. So, you know, I think right now for capital borrowing, we're using about a two and a quarter interest rate projection. Um I know we just got those from Capital Markets. So, you know, my, my guess is that the debt service on this in in year one, you know, is a couple of hundred thousand dollars. Um so I I don't, again, I I just think putting some numbers behind that will um demystify that for the advisory committee. And and if Libby, if if Libby can't help you with that, um Sue Nickerson could do that very quickly for you.
Thanks very much, Mary.
Yeah. Um anyone in the audience have a question or comment on Article Z? Okay, uh Joe Fisher is the liaison and the guy who asked a big question a year ago. Would you, would you, would you like to make a motion?
I move to recommend favorable action of Article Z.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill? Mary, aye. Uh Bill, Marco, Peter, uh J R, uh thank you. This is um, this is, this is a long journey, um this is a big step. And uh we're, we're, we're grateful for your dedication on this.
We know that it is, is a step, that is only the first step, and there are several more before we get this uh meeting. Let's uh, we'll start next Tuesday with the advisory committee.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much to all of the selectmen for taking the time to really understand this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Uh next item of business is a public comment. Uh seeing none, uh town administrator reports. Michelle, anything to report tonight?
No, Mary, thank you.
Tom?
Not tonight, thanks, Mary.
Bill?
No, not nothing, Mary. Hope everybody has a good weekend.
Joe?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Um me, me neither. So nine oh one, so if we had been a little quicker, we would have just, just made it in under the two hour mark. Um I I do just before we sign off, um, you know, between COVID, the normal work in the town, and all of the work that's going on for budgets and warrants, our, our town staff is, is, you know, really firing on all cylinders. And I just, um, I just wanna extend my appreciation to um all our dedicated staff. And and that starts with uh, you know, with with the two people on this call, Tom and Michelle. Um I I I don't know how you fit everything you do into a day. Um you've had some challenges this past week with um second round vaccines. We're trying to deal with reopening, we're trying to run a town, and we're trying to plan for our future. Um just on behalf of the board and the citizens of Hingham, um our sincere appreciation and thanks for um, for your continued dedication for the town and and to your, for your continued great work. So thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary, aye.